Alrighty, good morning, everybody. I am going to call our meeting to order and welcome you to our commission meeting for March 5th. Note that we do have a quorum. We are missing Commissioner Benenga today. Right, everybody, just silence your cell phone, avoid embarrassment. And if you're going to talk, any public input or public comment, please sign in for our record. I'm just going to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you, everybody, for that. Move on to our routine business. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Consent agenda. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda? Our consent agenda is pretty much our routine biz- our routine business that we go through. Not seeing anybody come up. Look for a motion to, or ask if any commission member would like to pull anything from the consent agenda. Then I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipling.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business. Consider a motion to issue a proclamation declaring March 16th, 2024, as St. Patrick's Day in Minnehaha County. Melinda, I know you did the legwork on this one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storely, Commission Office. The Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and the St. Patrick's Day Committee have requested a proclamation from the county commission for the 44th Annual St. Patrick's Day Extravaganza in downtown Sioux Falls. The county commissioners are invited to attend the Painting of the Shamrock and the reading of the proclamation, which will take place Saturday, March 16th, 2024, at 11:00 a.m. in front of the First National Bank at 100 South Phillips Avenue. The parade will take off at 2:00 p.m. from the intersection of 13th Street and Phillips Avenue, and will proceed north on Phillips Avenue to 5th Street. Sean Cleary is here to read and receive the proclamation.
Morning, Sean.
Top of the morning to y'all. First of all, we appreciate the continued cooperation and promotion from the county Minnehaha. So the proclamation, St. Patrick's Day of Old Minnehaha County, March 16th, 2024. Whereas we be Irishmen and women all this day of national celebration at home in Ireland and in homelands throughout the world. And whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's reminds us of all our shared heritage and membership in a global family. And whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland, of his great message of love and peace to one another. And whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage and music, dance, poetry, games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in the toast. And whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road of chance of good cheer and awareness of the green. And then this we proclaim. As leprechauns are dancing the joys that are everywhere, with luck as your companion, from deep in our hearts we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another. And thank God for the Irish who give us St. Pat, to bring us together wearing a green hat, and then shout and proclaim the 16th day of old March of St. Patrick's Day in Minnehaha County, dated this 5th day of the very month of March 2024, signed by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners.
And where do we buy our buttons?
You can buy your buttons at 605 Running, or the Cookie Jar, or the, actually, our nonprofit participant this year is the St. Francis House. So they'll receive portion of the button sales for their mission, and then they'll also be out selling buttons on the day of the parade, or you can stop in if you happen to go back there. Today, they have them today, so.
And we also ordered 65 degrees and beautiful sunshine, so.
The forecast looks like it should be pleasant this year compared to last year.
Excellent.
Commissioner Kipling was just mentioning that earlier, so. Only the hardiest Irish were out last year. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Sean. Alright, and look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Good luck to all the Irishmen.
Thanks, Sean.
Alright, moving on. Minnehaha County 4-H Program and Annual Presentation. Mr. Sketson and Ms. Anderson, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. My maternal grandfather was Bernie McDonald, so thank you for approving the St. Patty's Day proclamation there. This morning, we're here just to provide kind of our quarterly update of the 4-H program. And yeah, we'll just get right into it here. So I always like to start with an introduction as to what is 4-H, because we're kind of a unique youth development program, where we are supported at a federal, state, and county level. We are part of the Cooperative Extension System, and SDSU is the state entity that manages all of extension, including 4-H.
Alright, so we have a few program highlights for you today. The first one is Chicks in the Classroom, which is one of our favorite spring programs. This year, we're going to be in 11 different classrooms in Sioux Falls and Hartford. We target K through 2nd grade for that, and it's about double of what we did last year, so we actually bring chick eggs, fertilized eggs into the classroom, they incubate them, they learn about all the parts of the life cycle of a chicken, get to actually engage with those chicks for about a week after they hatch. So there's a lot of learning and excitement that happens in those classrooms, and it's a good introduction to agriculture.
Another program highlight we want to talk about this morning is our Shooting Sports Program. So in Minnehaha County, we have three shooting sports clubs. That's about 102 enrolled 4-H youth, and then 16 certified volunteers that help run those clubs. Those clubs provide opportunities for youth to shoot in a variety of disciplines. So in our county, we have 22 rifle pistol, air rifle, air pistol, archery, BB gun. And then in the summer, we have one club that does trap shooting at the Isaac Walton League. And so it's kind of a unique program in that we, a lot of these kids just do shooting sports. So as enrolled members, they're also open to participating in all the other 4-H opportunities. But this is kind of an area that we see a lot of new families to 4-H, because they're looking for an opportunity for their kids to learn how to shoot archery, how to shoot BB gun. Our volunteers have to go through excess training, or additional training, to be a certified shooting sports volunteer than just our club leader volunteers do. So it's a little more of a specialized program, obviously with the safety concerns that would come with shooting sports. But we, as a county, are pretty successful with our shooting sports program. The spring, they do competition, statewide competition, for everything except trap and skeet shooting. And they do a couple matches throughout the year, and match one just finished last month. And we had six first-place finishers in their discipline from our county, and then we swept all of the team BB gun. So our beginner team, our junior team, and our senior team all placed first in the state. In the past, we've had several 4-H youth attend national shooting sport competitions, and they qualify through that by competing at the state shoot at the end of April. And with what we've seen kind of with the match scores, I would anticipate some of our youth being selected to go to national shooting sports again this year. So just wanted to kind of highlight that as a program for you guys and the public this morning, because a lot of times when we think of 4-H, we still think of our Achievement Days, Sioux Empire Fair. But this is another part of it that's pretty popular in the county as well.
Alright, last thing we wanted to talk about was what we're getting ready for this summer. We're starting to gear up for that. Lots of stuff coming up. We have 4-H camp coming up. We'll have three different sessions that Nathan and I are both working with. Horse shows will be coming up as well. We have county level, and then they compete there. They're able to compete at the state horse show. We have multiple, what we call Youth in Action opportunities, so that's part of our Achievement Days, but it's not just exhibiting an item. They actually get to come out and engage. So we have fashion review where they either sew or select an outfit and present that to a judge. Special foods where they develop, they cook a meal, develop a menu, talk about the nutrition, learn all those aspects of that. And also public presentations, which, as we all know, speaking in public is a very important skill to have. So we love when the youth come out and engage in that way. We also are, have been working with Sioux Falls CLC and Sioux Empire Boys and Girls Club to do in-school programming, so we'll be able to work with them this summer as well, and their out-of-school programming, providing oftentimes different STEM activities and enrichment for those youth. Obviously, we have the Sioux Empire Fair that is coming up. We're already starting to think through some of those logistics. Regional Dog Show, and South Dakota State Fair. So there is quite a bit coming up this summer, and we are gearing up into that mode.
So that just kind of gives you a brief overview of what we're working on. Like I said, we kind of like to come once a quarter, just to give you guys an update. But we'd be available for any questions you have for us about the 4-H program. And if there aren't any, we just thank you for your support.
Thank you, Nathan and Aubrey. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Blainberg.
Thanks for being here today and for the update. I was just curious, with the shooting sports, is there a cost to the participants, and does the county or 4-H do, would be helped with that at all, or?
Yeah, so some of the clubs do ask for dues, because there is a cost associated with, obviously, some of the rental fees for the space. And then there is a cost for signing up for the state shoot. However, the dues with 4-H are always optional, because we don't want to limit participation because of a financial need for 4-H. So otherwise, it's just kind of the cost of what the family wants to put into it. Obviously, if you want to go and buy a really expensive bow to do shooting sports, there's going to be a cost involved. But most of our families already have the equipment, and some of our clubs own equipment that they can check out to interested members who maybe just want to practice and try it. So, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Alright, Nathan, Aubrey, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Alright, any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, moving on to our first reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing on March 26, 2024, for zoning ordinance text amendment 2402 to provide regulations for intermodal shipping, storage containers, in the joint jurisdiction with Sioux Falls, and it's easy for me to say.
Yes, good morning. I'm Kevin Huckman from the County Planning Department. Planning staff has reviewed the regulations for the intermodal shipping slash storage containers within the revised joint zoning area with Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. This started because there's been an increase in usage of shipping containers for both standalone structures and also a desire to use shipping containers as components for building structures throughout the county. A review of this ordinance really began with the county ordinance that was recently passed and became effective this January. But review as a joint area began in January meeting with the review of the ordinance. And then a final draft was presented to the Joint Planning Commission on February 26, 2024. The Planning Commission did unanimously vote to approve the proposed amendments. The amendment makes changes of three sections of the zoning ordinance, the accessory buildings section, the temporary use section, and it adds a definition in the definitions chapter. Since this is the first reading of the ordinance text amendment, action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing for the ordinance text amendment on March 26, 2024. Any questions?
Questions for Kevin. What organizations has this been vetted through? I mean, have we been to the Home Builders, or, who's all seen this change?
Sure. So we did go to the Home Builders on the previous amendment for the county at large, and we basically just moved that wording under the language to this amendment. The city of Sioux Falls agrees with it, that it really fits their understanding of how they use shipping containers in the city as well.
Alright, so I'll look for a motion to set our notice of public hearing for March 26, 2024.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Kevin. Moving on, then, first reading. I didn't take public comment. Anybody? No? Okay. First reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing on March 26, 2024, for zoning ordinance text amendment 2401 to add Article 12.19, long-term lease or rental. Scott, good morning.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and today also asking you to set a hearing date of March 26 to amend our county zoning ordinance. This would be adding Section 1219, long-term lease or rental. This is a item that's cleaning up some language in our ordinance and making it crystal clear that you are allowed to have long-term lease of properties. This would apply to things like farm leases, leasing out many storage units. If you had a house, a farmhouse in the county that you were leasing for like a year at a time, it just makes it clear that it is allowed. So we'd ask that you set the hearing date and authorize the publisher to, sorry, authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice.
Questions for Scott? How is long-term defined, Scott?
Long-term is defined as basically a lease that exceeds one month in period, in a period.
More than 30 days?
More than 30 days.
Okay. Alright, look for a motion to set the date of hearing for March 26, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Department of Equalization Annual Presentation. Chris Lilla, good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Lilla, Equalization Director. Yeah, this is our annual briefing, just to come in and kind of give you some overview of what we've done, what we're looking at doing and things like that. So the first slide that we always start out with is just our oath of our office, which our office does take to heart, and we do invest in that quite heavily. And it says that we do solemnly swear that we will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of South Dakota, that we will faithfully and impartially and honestly discharge the duties of our office, particularly that we will assess all property assayed by me at its true cash value according to the best of my knowledge and judgment, so help me God. That is our mantra, if you will. I mean, we strive for perfection. Obviously, everything is not perfect, and the world is always changing, but our data is getting better and better every year. And it's a long process when you're in a county this size, so. Some of the things that we do do in the department, we maintain and update all the county data, assess all real estate for property taxation, track and record all sales data, establish growth for the county and all of the individual districts that reside within there, that being could be rural service districts, school districts, TIF districts. There's a ton of them. We administer the majority of the exemption programs. We also work with planning and development, future projects for reappraisal. So a lot of exempt programs that we operate in, and right down to owner occupied, elderly freeze, disabled freeze, veterans exemptions, paraplegic exemptions, paraplegic vets. There's quite an extensive list that we manage and maintain. Obviously, that's pretty challenging, being in the largest county in South Dakota. We've got some census data there from 2020. I'll skip through that, but some of the information that we do keep is we, every parcel of property, or every parcel of land, or a building that is, I own the building, but it sits on Dean's land, I pay tax on the building, so that's considered a building on lease site. We still have to track and manage that under a parcel identification and legal description. So there's quite a few. I think we're at 77,906 parcels right now at the end of '24, so it's quite a list. For each one of those parcels, we have an identification number and a map ID. We maintain all current property information and history on all sales associated with those properties, sketches of improvements of those properties, values current and historical, as well as taxes. Again, all the programs that can be applicable through that for the history of any exemptions or anything like that with it, photos of any improvements. Don't beat us up on the photos. There's a lot of old ones in there. I mean, an old scanned photos, so as we do our reviews, those will be updated. When they review a property, we're taking new photos with date stamps, so we can keep those as current as possible, as well as all inspection notes that the appraisers discover. Sales, sales are down a little bit this last year. Previous year, '22, we had over 8,000 transfers. This, for '23, we had 6,170, so a little reduction in the market out there of the movement, although there was a slight decline in the sales. If you look at the graphs at the bottom, you can see that the sale prices tend to grow and stay pretty strong. So that's good for, it's not a bad thing that your values are going up. That's my personal take on it. Everybody associates values with taxes. That's not necessarily true. I certainly don't want to invest in a house and have it lose money. So we'll continue to record and trend the market sales and make annual adjustments as needed. Our office, we do not predict the values. We only track the sales of the market, so we are not predictors. We're always a year behind. For the 24 assessments, those sales were from October, November 1st of 2022 through October 31st of 2023. That's our, that's our sales data that is comparing to generate your values now. Real estate market adjustments this year. We started out this year, our beginning level of assessment for the county, we were at 82.4%. Generally, we'd like to target between 90 to 94% market-wide. This year, what that meant that we needed was an average county increase of 9.3. That doesn't mean everybody's property went up 9.3. There's areas that went up in excess of 9.3. There's areas that I actually had to take down this year. The market is starting to get a little erratic. We had quite a few neighborhoods that came down 3%, 5%, 10%. We had some neighborhoods that required 25% increases to match to those sales. The net result is when we put all those, the 24 values back against the sales, our county, our ending level of assessment was 90.1 for this year. So state law mandates that our level of assessment for assessment period be between 85 and 100. So 90.1, we're right in the middle of that range, falling a little bit on the low side, so pretty good. Obviously, every property that's out there, we have to consider three approaches to value. The first is the cost approach. That's basically your cost to construct land, or construct your improvements. And then we depreciate those and match those to market. The next is the income approach. We are able to look at income-producing properties such as apartments and validate their valuation on the cost approach to what it generates on an income model. As well as we have to, the bulk of our work is sales comparison approach, which is where we take our values and match them to the trending and the models of what the sales in neighborhoods are doing. So we're mandated to look at all three approaches, when and if applicable. Building permits. County, we assess all of the building permits that occur in the county. Currently, there's over 8,000 building permits that were recorded. It was a staggering year for new development and growth. The permitting has kind of remained fairly flat as far as the volume for us within the county. But if you look at the right bar graph, you can see the values of those. So there is some big projects going on out there. You know, and some of these here are the completion of Amazon and things like that. There's a lot of value, some, quite a few apartments that are going up, a lot of property that was on discretionary formula, commercial properties that has stepping through, and they're, each year, they're going up in value, so, and those are still considered under those permitting with growth. So permits are staying pretty active, but the value of those permits is still booming, so.
Mr. Chair, can I take a question? So that growth element, that's a key factor when we think about our budget. We're limited to growth of 3% or CPI plus growth.
Correct.
In this inflationary market, we're at 3%, but then we can also, if there's growth and new property value being created out in anywhere in Minnehaha County, that's, is that what that second graph is capturing, that we've seen?
Simple terms is, for budgeting purposes, you have your '23 budget, and now you're going into your '24. How much can you increase your '24 budget? You can, from your '23. You're limited to the CPI, and then whatever the growth is. And this year, and I don't, don't quote me on this, I think we're looking at countywide about 3%, 3.6% growth this year. So it's a pretty good number, and when you do 3.6% on 17 billion of value, I mean, there's a lot there. And that's kind of what that graph is illustrating, is that growth volume, that new value that is, wasn't there last year, but is new construction or new value added this year. Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
So do you have, do you have any idea what the growth was in '21, where the line goes virtually straight up?
I don't off the top of my head. I mean, I've got that information through our abstracting. I could certainly get that to you.
But it's fair to say that it, that it's, while it's going up, it's leveled off a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's still growing. I mean, and again, when you do percentages, which is what there's, the growth is really calculated off of to the bigger number. I mean, when you go from 15 billion, 2%, and then you're at 16 billion, and even if you maintain 2%, that is, that's massive. Generally, your growth percentage decreases as your value increases, because it's percentages of a larger number. Our percentages have continued to go up a little bit each year since, in the last couple of years, so. It's really a booming, booming market out there for us.
Another question, if I could. I know at planning and zoning, we look at building permits taken out in the county and the value of those. How do you deal with, and I know the outlier this last year was Tri Valley built a big new school, but then that's tax exempt. How do we deal with scenarios like that?
All of those tax exempt are not counted as growth.
That they're not in the growth. Okay, thank you.
Nope. Alright, so then last is again, kind of an overview of the exempt programs that we do, and there's others again. I mentioned owner occupied, elderly freeze. I do want to touch base on that. The state, a couple of years ago, really expanded the limitations for those, so there's a lot more people that are going to qualify now. The value of a home, so if an individual is 65 years or older and they're living on a fixed income, whether it be social security and Medicaid only, there's a two-part test to see if they can qualify for that. The first is the property value. And this year, the property value has to be less than $345,000. That's a big increase over where it has been in years past. So we have a lot more people that are going to be qualifying now, because the values have moved up. The next is the income limitations, and I don't remember these off the top of my head. It's like 40,000 and change for an individual, and I think it's 56,000 for a couple. The point being is if anybody out there is living on a fixed income, has fixed income, and are struggling with their bills, contact our office. It is notified on the back of every assessment notice, the programs, to make people aware of those. But please contact our office and inquire. This is actually administered through the treasurer's office, but we will certainly help them and assist them with and where we can. I think we're going to see estimations that I've heard from Chris say, you know, last year we had about 740 applicants that qualified, and I think we're going to be well over 1,000 this year. So that is a good thing. And I will say it is a value freeze. It's typically referred to as an elderly tax freeze. It is not a tax freeze. It is a value freeze. So the way that works, if I'm 85 years today and my property value is 285,000, what was the value of my property in the year that I turned 65? So what was the value of my property 20 years ago? We will freeze that value, and you will pay tax against that value of what it was 20 years ago. So that, regardless that their values keep going up and up and up, they will always pay taxes at that level or against that value in the year they turn 65. So it's a great program for those that qualify, and I don't want anybody left behind if somebody needs it. Obviously, we do discretionary formula. That's new commercial buildings, and it, those are scattered throughout. The small towns, city of Sioux Falls, there's a lot of variations in the formulas with those, but we do track and do all of those. Disabled veterans, our disabled veterans are, is really growing. We've received a lot of applications this year that the VA has deemed 100% permanent total, so we're getting a lot of those coming in, and that exempts the first $150,000 of value. Renewable energy credit, if we go into a house and determine there's a new geothermal put in there, we'll start that on that energy credit, and they'll get that added value exempted for that geothermal for four years. So if we put geothermal in your house and it adds $30,000 of value, we're going to exempt that 30,000 for four years, and then on the fifth year, then you got to start paying tax on it. Obviously, we handle all the religious, educational, charitable exemptions, the ag exemption, and there's others, as I mentioned. For '23, we did continue our physical review of residential properties within the county. Over the past year, we did complete physical review on 11 neighborhoods, five in Sioux Falls, two small towns we completed, four townships, and that's the goal of what we need to. That's what hadn't been completed in the county in over 20 years. It's going to take us about It's going to take us about eight or nine years to get through every property or get to every, every door um, on top of building permits, so we're making progress and, and we're picking up steam, we've got some, some newer staff. It's, it's going very well, and as we become more and more efficient, hopefully, we can do more and more and get through it a little faster. Big thing I, I'd like to tout out here is Beacon website, again, we publish that on the assessment notice, the, the website address, any property owner can go look at limited information for free, they can look up their property, see their value, their legal description, their tax history, um, sales on, on the properties, they can go to the map and see all the sales out there. Um, that has been a very valuable asset for our office, our phone calls and our traffic and our property card request has, has dropped dramatically. That allows us to do our job and, and stay focused and get ahead, and we're really doing well in that aspect, so. Staffing and training, uh, right now, we have fifteen assessors in the office or appraisers, and they evaluate all the property. Out of those fifteen, nine are new within the last three years. They are all exceptional, they've all passed their state certification, I mean, it, it just gets faster and faster and faster, I, I don't know how they do it. But we have some excellent, excellent employees over there that are really knowledgeable, really gaining speed, really efficient and, and able to answer all taxpayer questions and things, so very proud of, of the staff that we have now, so. That's about it for me, any questions?
Questions for Chris.
We did get our new vehicle yesterday too, by the way. That finally came in through state bid, so we made a flying trip to Pierre and picked it up.
Commissioner Bender.
Well, I, I think what, um, taxpayers would ask if they were here is, um, you know, every time notices come out, the questions that I get are, you know, you're killing me, my property values are going up, they've gone up two thousand percent over the last three or four years, um, and, and your, my taxes are going up because that, my property value is going up, how do you respond to people who contact you with those kind of questions?
A lot of times, it's just education for them, I mean, obviously, we do not control the taxes, we control the value, we are mandated to value property at market value. And again, we try to be in that, in that ninety to ninety-four percent range in those. And the majority of our neighborhoods, we're at, right at ninety to ninety-two percent, um, where we have volume of sales, we might be a little bit less on the level of percent, but ultimately, that's our job, is fair and equal assessment, fair and equal valuation. When it comes to the tax bill, um, unfortunately, that's the county budgets, the school budgets, the city or township budgets that determine those and divide that back in. So most of the time for us, it's just education that, from my perspective, from the office, is that we don't control the taxes. We have to value you at market, we will show them all the sales, I will walk through, I will do adjustments with property owners and show them that this is how we arrived at your value, this is what they're selling for, and most of the time, I will say, most of the time, people are unaware of what houses around them actually sold for. And once they get that education and they understand and they, and then we can demonstrate to them that they're being treated fairly and equally, their houses like their neighbors, they're the same value as their neighbors. And once, once people understand that, we've met the goal of our job, they understand the pain that comes with it, which unfortunately is the taxes. And I'm a taxpayer as well, so, um, but a lot of education. Our numbers right now are looking very good, um, as of this morning in Sioux Falls City. And that's the other thing, we are mandated by law to have the assessment notices postmarked by March first. I like to get them out early, so it gives us a bigger window, um, to work with taxpayers and things, and we get a lot of inquiries. We mailed this year on February fifteenth, sixteenth is the, when, when they went out. We had a, had a peak of calls and, and looks and reviews, assessors going out. Right now, as of now, in the city of Sioux Falls, I have five appeals. Entire city of Sioux Falls, so the numbers are way down, a lot of inquiries, but our data is getting cleaner, it's getting tighter, um, it's getting more supportive and a lot of education, so. And it also helped that the market came down a little bit, but looking historically, if we go back five years ago, the average increase in the county was five point seven percent. Four years ago was six point three, three years ago was eighteen point eight, last year was fourteen point four, and this year is nine point three. So you can see the, the peak is coming down, but it's still an increase. And nine point three is exceptional value growth, when you consider historically, it was three to four percent. So, that might be part of the reason why, is because it's slowing down a little bit. But ultimately, we have, it's the least busy we've been at this time of year since I've been here in five years, so.
Commissioner Kipli.
Mr. Chair, thank you, um, have we set dates, uh, maybe we're waiting for the total number of appeals to see how much time we need for appeals, but that's going to be in April, correct?
You're talking the county board, yeah, we don't know, we've got to get through the local board and see what's there, the county board is typically a little heavier with the commercial appeals. Um, because most of the commercial appeals, for one, they historically wait till the final day to appeal. And number two, most of those commercial appeals, their headquarters are not based here, so they can skip local board and go right to the county board, so we're typically heavier on, on commercial appeals at the county board than at the local. But I don't know, I think I've only heard of two potential commercial appeals, so.
I would say, Chris, that's pretty impressive for the number of appeals, I've sat on those appeal boards now for thirteen years and we would do
Hundreds.
Eight an hour for, you know, eight hours for three days, and yeah, so to hear, hear that there's only five, that, that is quite impressive. Commissioner Blumberg.
Thank you, uh, I was just curious if you could tell us at all about, I think the formula you use right now for the valuation includes things like, um, plumbing fixtures and the quality of some of the materials that are used in addition to things like square footage and stuff like that. Um, how long has it been that way? Somebody just recently asked me, why isn't it that we just count rooms like it used to be? I, I don't know how.
It never used to be that way.
Okay.
It's always been, it's always the cost, it starts out at the cost to build a, a, a structure or a house or an apartment, it's what is the cost, and it's not your cost. And it's not what I say the cost is, we're mandated by state law to use Marshall and Swift valuation services and or, um, Vanguard. And in Minnehaw County, we use Marshall and Swift, so when the appraisers go out there, they've got the data that, that is key into that, how big is it, they measure, they measure how, what's the perimeter? Um, what is the quality, there's two things that the appraisers control, that is, what is the quality of the home and what is the condition of the home? That's it, everything else the appraisers do is, is quantifiable or countable. They'll go through, how many plumbing fixtures are there, every time you have a, have a sink or a toilet, that's, that adds value to build into your house, when you, when you deviate from, say vinyl flooring and you do hardwood, that's an added, that's an added expense, you're not going to get hardwood for the same price as, as vinyl, so when they're recording all of that, all of that gets put in and calculated and ran against Marshall and Swift. And Marshall and Swift is, is not, well, they're worldwide, but they do national quarterly surveys and send us updates on that. And it says, when we put all of that data in, it says, well, this is the cost that the flooring adds, this is the cost of the roofing, if you deviate from asphalt shingles to a, to a steel shingle or metal roof, there's an added cost to that. And, and it's not just the cost of the materials, it's the labor and the cost to do that, so I always share that with people. I'll take their plumbing fixture count, maybe they got twelve plumbing fixtures, and we don't call them halves or three-quarters, we literally count plumbing fixtures. And you'll, you'll look at that and they'll say it's twelve thousand dollars a plumbing fixture. Or twelve thousand dollars of value, you divide that back to plumbing fixtures and it's eighteen hundred dollars a plumbing fixture. And I always point this out to people and say, now, you can go to Menards and you can get a toilet for a hundred and sixty bucks, but you're being valued for eighteen hundred. And then I tell them, now go home, call the plumber and say you want to put a toilet in your living room. What's the cost going to be? It's not the cost of the toilet, it's the cost of the labor and the materials to put that in, that's how, that's where we start. And from there, then, we rebuild every year, the costs are reattributed to the properties, they're constructed new, brand new, as if you were going to build a brand new today, this is what it would cost. Then we depreciate it through depreciation tables, because if it's not new, it runs through a table and it starts taking that physical wear and tear away. Whether it is there or not, every house is going to get it, they're uniform for their age and their quality and/or their condition. As a, if the condition, if I built a new, if we built two new houses today and one is maintained and one is rented and destroyed, holes in the sheet rock, the windows will go, toilet fixtures are broken off, we can move that condition down to a fair condition or a poor condition, that's going to accelerate that depreciation and reduce value quite extensively away, so that's where we manage that. But once that's, build it new, then we depreciate it, then the next step of ours comes in where now we've got that depreciated value and we compare that to the sales on a ratio study, and that tells me what do I need to do in this neighborhood, increase, decrease, or leave it alone to get me into that ninety percent range.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, um. Just a couple of other things, Beacon, I know it's been a good program for, I use it through my business, but is it possible to set it up where every taxpayer could access at once for free? If I wanted to look at what my appraisal is based on, the information on my home?
Um, no, I, I mean, the full information right now, you can go look and see, you can look at, you can look at Joe's house, go in there and see what is the, what is his assessed value now and the history in there, you can see what are his taxes and the history.
But you can't see the data on the home.
But the, but the, the sketch and stuff, no, right now, there is not, and it's two dollars if you want to, if you want to see it.
Okay, just curious, because people like to know what they're being actually appraised at.
Side note, if anybody ever wanted to come into my office, I'll be happy to print them out their record card. They can also come into our office, we have the public access to computers up front that have full access to Beacon, and it's free if they want to come in.
Okay, good to know, and if somebody wanted their home reappraised for some reason, just call your office.
Call our office and we'll be happy to go out and look.
Go and, you mentioned neighborhoods, what's a typical number of parcels to a neighborhood?
They used to be about six thousand parcels, and when we re-neighborhooded those, we, we tried to target seven hundred or less, I think we've got two that are about nine hundred, um, otherwise, that, that would be the extreme, um, most of them are, are probably around that four to five hundred parcels. So when we're comparing sales, it isn't the city of Sioux Falls, we're comparing you to four hundred other houses around you, and that's it, a sale two miles away is not impacting your value.
Good, good to know, thank you, any other questions? Public comment, alright, this was a briefing, annual, thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Alright, moving on then, authorize the chair to sign a right-of-way purchase agreement with Stephen and Deanna Reggey for the construction and maintenance of the bridge south of Highway one oh four, and I apologize if I pronounced anybody's name wrong, good morning, Steve.
Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, I'm not sure the proper pronunciation either. Uh, we opened bids for a structure fifty-one forty-four oh twenty, and part of that project is we need some additional right-of-way along the south side of the structure for both construction and future maintenance. We're looking for your permission to purchase this property from the Reggies for fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Alrighty. Questions for Steve? Public comment? Commission action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on, consider bid results and award recommendation for MC twenty-two oh nine, structure fifty dash one forty-four dash oh two oh replacement and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Prom Construction Incorporated, Steve.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, back on January twenty-third, I came before the commission and sought your approval to solicit bids for the replacement of the structure, the structure has been identified as being a critically bridge on our paved system to be replaced. We were very satisfied with our bid opening back on February twenty-first. The pricing seems to be coming back down to reality based on other bids that have been open recently, we're looking for your permission to enter into a contract with Pram Construction to reconstruct this bridge. We actually had the structure identified in our five-year CIP for twenty-twenty-five construction. Contractor has indicated they plan on doing this project next year, so you should not need to come to the commission for a supplement to pay for this project. We'll just be able to adjust our budget numbers in our upcoming budget supplemental to pay for it.
Hopefully, all of our bids come in
Yes.
Thirty percent lower, so, okay.
Commissioner Karski, right now, the bids, the engineer estimates are just really high based on the previous two years of bid openings, and this is probably more accurate to what an engineer estimate would have been two years ago on guess.
Good to know, question, other questions for Steve? Public comment? Commission action?
I'll move approval.
Second?
Motion is section, second, call the roll, please.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries, alright, thank you, Steve. And we're buying something, consider a motion to authorize the highway department to purchase a Doosan P-two fifty MHP one eighty-five air compressor utilizing the Sourcewell procurement contract.
Now, once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, this is part of our budgeted capital access asset purchase plan for this year. This is a critical air compressor that also runs a sandblaster for our bridge crews, they're using an old Army surplus unit right now, they've had a lot of mechanical issues the last couple of years, so this will replace that former Army unit and give our bridge crew the tools they need to keep doing their maintenance.
Alright, questions for Steve? Public comment? Commission action?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, alrighty, thank you, Steve, you have a good day, sir. Legislation, legislative session update and status report on bills that impact Minnehaw County, Tom?
Alright, good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer, uh, we're just about there, well, the legislature is just about done with the session, we're on the thirty-fifth day, two days left. Uh, veto day is on Monday, uh, you know, certainly a lot going on this week, uh, kind of from a higher level. Uh, some of the things we've talked about before HB one thousand seven eleven ninety-four and SB four, uh, we've hit on those before regarding veteran services, um, certain funding associated with TIFs, uh, and some bidding flexibility for townships. The latter portion of this memo here, we do, uh, reference the, uh, some of the work done with the county summer, or the county funding summer study uh, and other, um, efforts over the past couple of years, uh, particularly regarding indigent legal services. Uh, and there are several other items of interest that I'll touch on, uh, right quick here, uh, to provide, to provide you with an update. Uh, I do anticipate I'll come back to you probably, uh, by the end of this month with a full rundown of kind of where everything landed, uh, with regard to the legislature and potential impacts to the county in general. Uh, but a couple of items of note that we've discussed before, HB ten thirty-nine, uh, this is the, uh, bill that, um, re, is in regard to, uh, costs associated with, um, crimes committed in the penitentiary. Uh, that has passed, it was signed by the speaker, so it'll go off to the governor. Uh, HB ten fifty-seven, a lot of talk about that, that's, uh, regarding indigent, indigent defense costs. Uh, that too has been signed by the speaker and will go on to, um, the governor, that's uh, certainly, you know, one of those items that came out of the summer study, but also, uh, the task force that was put together last year. Uh, some other items that I think, uh, you know, we'll continue to keep an eye on, uh, you know, really for the next couple of days here. HB ten ninety-two regarding the surcharge for metro communications, uh, that's in conference, um, and it is going to be heard later this morning, I believe at eleven AM, so I don't really have too much of an update for you right now. Uh, but the gist of that particular item is that it changes the surcharge from a dollar twenty-five to two dollars uh, to support the, the large investment in metro, in, in, um, those emergency communications. Uh, the other item of note, uh, for us to keep an eye on, for you all to keep an eye on, SB two oh one, uh, has been discussed before, um, uh, Tyler gave an update on it a couple of weeks ago regarding, uh, pipelines, so this particular bill is also in conference, I'm not sure when they're going to um, discuss that again, um, you know, certainly within the next couple of days here. Uh, but, uh, some of the salient points from that, you know, uh, foremost, it does have a preemption provision for the PUC, currently, they have a may. This changes it to a shall, uh, if the, if, if certain ordinances or, or other provisions that, um, lower jurisdictions are deemed too restrictive, but this particular, uh, bill also provides for a dollar, uh, surcharge that, uh, counties can, um, basically charge, uh, pipeline companies per foot, per linear foot of pipeline. Um, so those are things that we'll keep an eye on, uh, over the course of the next couple of days. Uh, and I would consider those, you know, certainly, uh, you know, some of the key items that we'll want to see how they, how they land. Uh, with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Questions? Public comment? Tom, appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we are now at the opportunity for public comment, if anybody would like to make a comment on anything that is not on our agenda, we welcome it at this time. I'll limit it you to five minutes and thirty minutes total. We're safe, alright, Commission Liaison reports. Commissioner Blumberg?
Um, just wanted to mention that the, um, Minnehaw County Water Festival is Just wanted to mention that the Minnehaha County Water Festival is coming up next week, so we have several different entities that we support that will be involved in that with all the fourth graders, learning about water for a few days. I believe it's over four hundred fourth graders will get to experience that, and then also, the UDC has several different corridor studies and transportation studies coming up in the month of March, and they are looking for public input at some open houses, so, just wanted to put that out there in case anybody wanted to share their opinions about the roads.
All righty, thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?